Morning ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Board of County Commissioners work session for Wednesday, November 25th, 2020. If you'd like to join in via phone call to listen, not for comment, the phone number is 360-252-9020, and the PIN is 1234. I'm John Hutchings, the Chair of the Board. We also have Vice Chair Commissioner Ty Mensah, and Commissioner Gary Edwards, has he joined us yet?
Yeah, I believe he's just joined via telephone. Can you confirm that, Commissioner Edwards?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear, thank you, sir.
Good, do we have Commissioner Edwards?
Okay.
We also have Romero Chavez, our County Manager, and Assistant County Manager, Romero, I'm sorry, Robin Campbell, and Amy Davis, Clerk of the Board, is in. And I see a host of other very important people, in-house anyway. Public CPED Director Josh Cummings is with us as well. And we have guests from the outside, I see Aslan Mead, good to see you. And this topic today is Regional Agriculture Development Update. So I'll start with you, Romero.
Yes, this is, I personally looking forward to this update. It is, it is an effort that I believe the EDC, as well as the, was the extension, have been, have been part of that. I know that Josh also has been, been involved, as well as Jenica, that is why they're part of this presentation. So with any further ado, I believe Aslan is going to take the lead, is that correct, on this presentation?
I'm actually going to say Stephen's going to take the lead.
Stephen, there you go, Mr. Brownlow, do you'd like to share the screen?
I will, sir, here we go.
And we have a pretty copy of the PowerPoint.
Yes.
It might have changed slightly since you, your version, but it should be good to follow along. And certainly Josh and Jenica, you know, if at any point you want to just insert something, just jump right in, so.
And we have an hour, so we got plenty of time.
And I guess I just want to, just really quickly, David Pharaoh is on the call. He is our new Economic Development, Regional Agriculture Development Manager. He's actually at our Food Hub operation right now in the city of Tombwater, where they're packing up some yummy local vegetables from our farmers that will be going out.
Wow, wonderful.
Yes, and so David's brand new to the program, full-time employee of the EDC. He'll be part of our presentation to tell about his story, so.
Very nice, nice touch, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's great, thanks Aslan for getting David introduced. And that other comment too is a good one, we'll have just a slightly updated slide deck, but it's about ninety-five plus percent of what you, what you see. But of course, the update is in front of you here on the presentation. And yeah, welcome, welcome comments and questions, we, we want to leave ample time to, to have a discussion at the end. And I appreciate being invited to come in to present along with Aslan Mead from the Thurston EDC. It's been, you know, I think all of us would agree, nothing short of an astonishing year in, in a number of ways. And interestingly, it's been a year that we've seen a lot of our efforts over the past decade and more start to, or maybe continue to bear fruit in some places, and then start to bear fruit in others, so. I'm really looking forward to this update, I've, I've really enjoyed putting together the summary with Aslan and David. I've enjoyed working with Jenica on the CARES Act Mini Grant Program. And we'll talk about those, all of those items. So I wanted to, we both wanted to put this up at the beginning. It's got a little bit of a short list of some of the places we've been, some of the milestones that have marked the past.
Hey Stephen, can you show, can you show your screen? I think you're following your PowerPoint, so it's not, it's, it's not showing for the public's view.
It's not actually showing though, okay.
No.
Um, let's see.
We'll tell you when it does.
Okay. Let's see, let me. There we go.
Almost.
Yeah, and then there.
There you go, yeah, you got it, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, one last click was needed. So now we'll have to leave our pretty glossy slide at the beginning quickly. But this is the milestones that we've reached in the last several years. And this is important to bring up because the county has, has done important work in, in supporting agriculture economic development. In the late seventies, the Ag Committee was formed as a result of the Citizens Report. I'm going to gloss over quite a few, but several important intervening actions that occurred between then and 2010. It's a big span of time, but there's some important reports and actions that occurred during that period of time. In 2010, that's notable because the Workingly Strategic Plan pulled together much of that information from, you know, pre-seventies, certainly the comments in the Citizens Report in nineteen seventy-eight, and charted a course for supporting agriculture in the county. I, I, on the positive side, many of the recommendations remain relevant. On the negative side, many of the recommendations remain relevant. But it's a, it's a really a good report, it might stand to benefit from an update. One important goal set forth in that Citizen, in that Workingly Strategic Plan was bringing the Northwest Ag Business Center Representative down in the services of NABC, down into Thurston County. We're happy to report, and some of the successes we've had in recent years are due to having received NABC services down in Thurston and Lewis Counties. And we'll talk more about that. A predecessor of the current County Manager, around 2012, shifted the Extension Director position from Thurston County from, from a one unit within Extension into an agriculture-specific position. That happened around 2012, recognizing the need to support farming and agriculture in the county and focus more resources on it. That was the time that Lucas Patzick was then hired. He was predecessor of mine in the Extension Director at Extension. He did a number of really important things while he was here. It was a short tenure between 2012 and 2014, but really pursued this idea of specialty grain production, started the Cascadia Greens Conference, seeded the idea along with Partners of the City of Tombwater for a Innovation Partnership Zone that Aslan will talk more about. Completed a Farms-to-Market Assessment in 2014 with a graduate student from Evergreen State College, Sarah Rocker. That laid the foundation for what Aslan just mentioned, that David Pharaoh was at the Food Hub packing boxes today. Those ideas were really seeded in that Farms-to-Market Assessment that identified a need for aggregated marketing services for farmers. And he also did, and we won't talk a lot about it today, but initiated some grazing work that ties into a partnership that Extension has with the county and other community partners working on the HCP and grazing lands and their integration into conservation work. But, and I just want to recognize that some of that was established during, during Lucas's time as well. In 2015, the IPZ Zone for Craft Beverage Brewing Distilling and Cider was, was formed with the, with the City of Tombwater, Aslan will talk more about that. Thurston EDC and Port of Olympia building on, Aslan, what's the title of the report? The Industry Cluster?
Yeah, it was an Agricultural Economy Report to, to the, to the Port of Olympia. But really, my position came into the EDC with some extra funding from the Port of Olympia specifically to do an assessment of our ag economy, so.
Mm-hmm. And so that was a nice step by the Thurston EDC, and it's been yielding dividends ever since in, in, in supporting agriculture in the county, which has been fantastic. And then between 2016 and 2020 is what we're going to focus on here, but really a few wins from 2020 specifically. And I just want to point out that we're seeing some positive impacts of work that was founded during this time. But I, and I also want to mention, there's more needed. This is an upbeat report today, we're looking at some really cool successes. I want to be honest with myself and in with you that there's more challenges ahead than successes we've won this year. That's not to diminish the value of, of what we've gotten done, but we're not going to focus on all that work. But you know, that, that, that is an area that I want to be able to focus on with you going forward. So now into the, the fun successes and wins and collaborations, Aslan's going to, going to talk here.
And I just want to point this piece out, this slide to me is really important. Like, we have never, and not, certainly not in the time that I've been around, had three organizations with, with, you know, real staffing capacity and resources behind them and a, and a commitment to supporting regional-scale agriculture. And, you know, we've tried these, you know, for a while, when Stephen first arrived, it was the EDC, the Conservation District in WSU. I think you all are aware that Conservation District has had some struggles in the last couple of years. There's still a really, really important part of that, and I, and there's a lot of other organizations involved. I'm not calling out these three in exclusion of other organizations, but just saying that the three of these organizations now, Mike Peroni with the NABC is not here with us, he is actually calling on my phone trying to reach me right now, allowed these three organizations, we really coordinate everything together. And then, as Romero and Josh and others know, we did initiate this letter of, of agreement to approach regional agriculture, you know, agriculture development on a regional perspective and level, and we'll get into that in a minute. But just know that, you know, there's a lot of organizations all partnering together, but these three organizations are really in the coordinating seat. And, you know, we have gone after funding together and been successful, and we've now have, you know, extended our, our staffing capacity with that piece up in the right-hand corner with the partnership with Pack Mountain. Just been extraordinary to now have, what we just introduced you briefly to David Pharaoh. He's now housed in the Thurston EDC, but it's a position paid for by Pack Mountain. It's a full-time position at the warehouse right now, he's with Jessie Honaker. She's housed with NABC, but she is paid for by Pack Mountain, a full-time position to run the Food Hub. So, so just, we've never been in such a great position with organizations and staffing to move a lot of these projects forward.
Yeah, thanks Aslan, and you know, we wouldn't be sitting here as opposed to being down at the Tombwater Warehouse, getting in vans and starting to drive on routes if we didn't have that kind of support. So extending that capacity through these positions at Pack Mountain has been wonderful, and they've also offered more. So as we do more work in the community, we have an important workforce development partner. We always have, but I think we're learning how to use that partnership better now, which has been fabulous. What, I think one of the instigators for us all meeting this morning was this Letter of Understanding that we brought to County Manager Romero some time ago, likely in late 2019, and this was a, is that about, I think that's a close to right.
It was actually January of, of, of 2019, and I.
It's been a while.
Time flies.
And I do believe Thurston County was the first to sign it, so.
And, and, and Romero's question to us was a good one, and it was, is this going to be a feel-good thing, or what will we see coming out of this? And so there's an opportunity to come back and talk about how this Letter of Understanding, as well as a related strategic plan that we developed that's paired with this, has guided the work this, this year in particular, but certainly in the last two years. But, yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Hutchings.
With what you just said, and, and with what Aslan Mead just mentioned, Thurston was the first to sign on to this. I just read the Letter of Understanding while you were speaking, and wondering on the back, the signatures that Capital County Thurston is number two on the list rather than number one.
Well, if you go to the next slide.
Oh, okay then.
We'll, we'll see that shortly, I, I think.
All right, thank you, go ahead.
But a prominent position and support, and that's great. We don't need to read through all of it, but the intent of this letter was to develop collaboration across jurisdictions, and to think about agriculture development not on the basis of our jurisdictions, but as a region that works together. And it's only natural that ports and county governments have particular purviews that they operate within. But to the extent to which we can work across county lines, that infrastructure works across county lines when we get it in place. A grain storage facility, a food hub, you know, all of that type of work serves farmers in that work doesn't stop where the county line stops. So when it comes to funding initiatives in particular, we've been very hopeful to prioritize as a team across a region in order to be that much more effective if we go to the state legislature or some other funding source. So with that in mind, the goals of this have been to increase the effectiveness of Ag Development Initiative, enhance and improve efficiencies by working together and collaborating and not duplicating, advance a regional strategy aligned with a unified vision for agriculture development. I don't know that we're quite to a total unified vision, but I think we're getting there. And then this last funding piece, maximizing our opportunity by coordinating regionally. So, so there's kind of a good spirit approach to working together and in a, in the spirit and practice of cooperation with the aim of employing a strategic systemic approach to advance ag development throughout the region, so. It's been a neat opportunity to get started, and there's been a lot of buy-in here, and that's where we get to this list.
Commissioner Hutchings, did you notice that I rectified that on, on this slide? And I, I think, in all honesty, I think we have Lewis at the top because we had so much buy-in from Thurston County, and we were trying to court more participation from Lewis County, but now with Mike Peroni down in Lewis County, Lewis County has been very, very active in this process. But, but I'm very proud of this list of folks, like the, the, again, you know, one of our greatest strengths is both the quality and the quantity of our partnerships, our ability to partner and coordinate with, with multiple organizations, both, you know, jurisdictions, as well as nonprofits, as well as state-level agencies, all working together to. And, and it does, it really does take, you know, when you're working on these different parts of these efforts, you have to reach out to all different kinds of folks to, to move the, move the ball down the field, so.
Yeah, I've thought of this economic development work this past year as like a really good pie or a really good soup, that, that the ingredients and all the right ingredients and the right amounts are critical. Sometimes it's not even a matter of even the right ingredient, but like the right specific type of an ingredient. Because just getting somebody at the EDC that's interested in agriculture is not enough, and not the same as having, say, somebody like Aslan and somebody like David to work with it, that have the right perspective, the commitment, the buy-in, and so we could easily, for all the projects we'll present, starting with the next slide, have a lot of different lines on this list that show how all these partners have contributed something along the way. So it's, it's been more eye-opening to me than ever how critical this regional collaboration is. The most striking one this year, hands down, was Pack Mountain. The support we got from Pack Mountain to launch the Food Hub was, was amazing. This is a little dizzying, but I did want to take a stab at putting the Letter of Understanding in the context of a strategic approach to ag development. So, you know, I'll just call out, the Letter of Understanding is, is right here in the middle. There's a lot of different signatories, you've just seen that list, they're all across the top. And then it goes into this, you know, rounded cornered box, and this is the work we do, right? Like, we, we have a sense of what the needs are in the Ag Committee. We have a process which is illustrated in the strategic plan that we've provided a copy of to you in terms of how we go about doing work, that's our engagement strategy. And then there's these implementation pieces over here. Ag parks, that's, you know, think the Toninno Ag Park, you could also think a Chevalier's Facility going in where the ag, grain facility is. Food hubs, marketing, processing is an area of, of ambition for us, where we still have a lot of work to do. Campaigns around awareness to get people buying in and committing to supporting agriculture. This is an area where our Community Planning Division does a lot of work, policy work, and currently Jennifer's doing the Community Driven Review Agriculture, which you're involved in. And then of course, there's other policy complementary to that. New programs, this could be new farmer training, or it could be a conservation easement program that gets built up. But whatever new programs are coming, and then certainly applied research to, to move our work forward and have the information to make decisions.
If I could just say, we, we have focused a lot more today on the infrastructure, as you'll see as we move forward into infrastructure and market development. But I think that Stephen was very humble in not including the amount of research that he has done over the last four or five years, which has informed everything we've done. His amount of direct surveying and outreach to the producer community, to the buyer community, his cropping grain trials, where he actually grew grain for two years running, that, that was then evaluated both at the labs at WSU for what grains can grow best in the region, to what tastes best in distilled spirits and craft beverages. So anyways, just a shout out to the amount, enormous amount of research that Stephen has led over the last several years.
Thanks Aslan, yeah, I think that applied research and the information it brings has, has helped us along too.
Hey Stephen, can I jump in real quick?
Yeah, please Josh.
This is a powerful slide, this gets right to your point of Romero's question, is this going to be a feel-good letter that we're signing, or what are the outcomes? Those gray boxes are the outcomes, so.
That's right.
This is, this is a good-looking slide, thanks for sharing this, it's powerful.
Good, this is one where you look at late in the day and think, this could be good, or it could be a terrible mistake.
I gave Stephen a little flack for this slide, so thanks Josh, you, you validated him.
Yeah, well, don't do too much, but yeah, I, I hope it paints a picture that's understandable. The area that will focus our attention is how the projects tie into these primary six needs areas. Because this is what came out of a needs assessment that Aslan and I worked on with the Thurston Conservation District in 2016 and 17, and they were reiterated in recent work when we formed this Letter of Under, this got signatories to the Letter of Understanding, so. This just shows what, why these are important areas for us to focus on, these are those six. And like Aslan mentioned today, we're going to really be focusing on infrastructure and markets. We have a loss of critical infrastructure to produce the market goods. And then we have some, some market development work that's really needed, both in the kind of, even the mid and large-scale markets, not the highest margin, but those are really needed. We have a good example of why, and then also high-value markets, and we'll, and we'll talk about that too. These are other challenging areas, and we won't go much into them today, but I think we touch on regulatory down at the bottom. So Aslan's going to launch into discussing this great piece of infrastructure work happening down in Toninno.
So yeah, so this is the first actual implementation that we're going to highlight. It is the, the Agricultural Business and Innovation Park in Toninno. I think most everyone is somewhat familiar with this at this point, but in case you're not, the real focus is on, on the manufacturing and processing, to actually have the, the manufacturing of agricultural goods. If you look at the bottom bullet point there, onsite processing, sourcing from regional growers, that is certainly an aspiration, is that not only will we be doing the processing and manufacturing at the agricultural park, providing jobs onsite, but that we're also stimulating that, that, that ground-level production of, of supporting our farmers to put more land under cultivation. And so I think that we've certainly realized through COVID that supply chains need to be more resilient, and that we really need to be growing more food in our own region, for our own region's consumption. And the Ag Park is, could certainly be a huge piece in filling some of those gaps. And so there is also this vision that we will be, you know, it will be an innovation, innovative center, and certainly some of the first tenants that I'm talking with right now, potential tenants could be incredibly innovative, so that there would be that product development and, and innovation taking place. We already, through like the Food Hub project, are, are learning how to do this kind of shared marketing and new market development, and, and that will be a component as well. And obviously with Thurston County, you know, we are dead center on the southern portion of the Bountiful Byway, and really anticipate having some agritourism component as well. And then, as I think all of you know, the EDC is really all about that business, technical assistance. And we fully intend to have some version of our Center for Business Innovation down, represented in the southern part of the county, specifically to help with our rural businesses, an extension of our STEADY program, so. Why don't we move on to the next slide?
Hey Aslan, on that project, I think Michael Cade said, if you build it, they will grow.
That sounds like something Michael Cade would say, yes. We have definitely positioned ourselves at the Thurston EDC to be growing our own businesses. You know, we certainly will recruit new businesses here when we have the opportunity to do so, but we see our place as growing our own businesses, so. So these are just the, some of the, you know, pieces, for those of you who are not aware, you know, it is a thirteen-acre site, it's owned by the city of Toninno. It's currently under lease to the EDC to manage the construction of the park. We have received planning funding through the Port of Olympia and USDA Rural Development for the master planning, and that is completed. The six hundred thousand for the utility extension has, we are down to the last sixteen thousand. We've been, most of that has gone on this summer, and I'll talk a little bit more about that with the next slide. We still have one point five million from the capital budget for the first building, and David Pharaoh is just starting to unleash that funding with a contract with Commerce right now. Josh sat on our Green Ribbon Advisory Panel, and I think Jenica also attended a, a meeting or two. Really powerful to have this panel of twenty-one representative and stakeholders throughout, really, multiple counties and state agencies, just really powerful influential people, but also representing both government and industry to advise us and helped us come up with a plan for park management and ownership. A lot of market research obviously has gone into to identify the types of tenants to go after, what gaps there are in the industry, and where we could position ourselves as a most competitive advantage. And we do have multiple tenants that are interested. I feel like if I could say, give them a date when the first building was up, I could even maybe get some, some people to sign up and with letters of commitment. And I also have a, my dream, a dream anchor tenant that we're courting right now and working on a lease agreement negotiations with, that, you know, if, knock on wood, if that came through, I would, I would feel like the park was a success already, so. Next slide, please. So we did break ground, starting in the spring with the money from the capital budget. We got sewer and water to the sites, sewer wasn't that hard because it's right next door to the wastewater treatment plant in Toninno. We, then amazingly, we came in under bid on our construction costs, and we were able to then wrap the site with water, and we were still under bid, and we, we still had money left over. We were able to extend Class A, the Class A reclaimed water to Miles Sand and Gravel, which you can see in the backdrop of the picture on the upper right. And we still have sixteen thousand left right now that we're in discussions with the city of Toninno about what might be best. We're thinking right at the moment that, you know, maybe using some of that money on engineering and prepping for that creation of that, building, that first building. So that is my Ag Park presentation at this moment. I'm happy to take a couple of questions right now, or I think Josh had suggested we, we look to take most of the questions at the end.
Let's start with Gary, Gary, do you have any questions thus far or comments?
No, no, I don't touch, I think everything's going, looked good. That's all I wanted to hear was this update, that sounds good. I would like to maybe get a number from Stephen for later, I have to call him about a grain issue I talked to a farmer about, that's the only, only question I have right now.
Number three. Okay, well Stephen, you can hook up with Commissioner Edwards to get that number to him.
Yeah, will do.
Ty, you got any questions or comments?
Maybe before you leave the Ag Park, on the previous slide, you say, Green Ribbon Advisory Panel, twenty-one stakeholders, park management and ownership structure identified. I'm curious if there's, are they done, are they done with that work? Or they're, they're working on setting up this ownership structure and management structure, where does that stand?
Yeah, the, at the end of last year, so right at the end of two thousand nineteen and twenty, twenty, we wrote a final report from the, the panel, which I can, which I can share with all of you, I can send that on to Romero. But yes, the park management ownership structure is identified. But yes, the park management ownership structure is identified. And it could change certainly, but right now it is the, that the, the, uh, EDC Center for Business Innovation would maintain. Management of the park throughout the construction phase and at least through the first building. But the fact that if, if the park began to continue to grow, that there would be, uh, alternative options where we could even partner with someone like a Coffin Construction to just. You know, who, who builds and manages parks all the time and hand over the management of the park to someone like that. There's many different options that could. Could happen as we grow the park into the future, but, but as it stands now for the, the initial construction phase and the. Initial management phase, it would be the EDC in that role.
There's only question.
Okay. I would just, uh, this is probably the perfect time to say it because you, you've talked about it already, uh, Aslan and, uh, and Stephen. Yes, for any, the success for a business, business model success is predicated on, uh, is this unique? Is it achievable and is it sustainable? So when you look at the uniqueness, it's very unique to Thurston County. It might be unique regionally in the Southwest. I don't know if it's nationally unique or not, uh, but it would seem with the, uh, with the innovation going on now with Tenino. Uh, Ag Park and CBI, that this is unique. When you look at whether it's achievable or not, look at what you've done, the successes thus far, not only with. You know, breaking ground, uh, and coming in under budget, but also with the, uh, the, the massive amount of collaboration you have. Uh, it's very achievable and it's becoming achieved. Uh, and for sustainability, I would think with the right partners in place that you have, but the right people in place. Uh, like you, Aslan and Stephen, uh, and even to include, uh, uh, what, David, David Pharaoh. Uh, Jenica, Josh, I mean, this, I think this is going to be very sustainable and I'm, I'm really excited about this. Especially with the part, uh, where you come in under budget and you're collaborating with Tenino. How else can we? Can we even better this? There's nothing so good that it can't be improved upon and you're already doing that. So I think that's, uh, worth pointing out in it. When you look at the, the question that, uh, someone asked regarding outcomes and page five. As, uh, Josh was pointing out, page five of the slide is like the key of this, uh, this whole thing of the outcomes. I'm looking at your letter that you supplied also the strategic plan and on page two at the bottom, the intended outcomes. This is really cool. This is, it's well thought out, uh, what the interests are, what the concerns are and the intended outcomes. You are on top of this and, uh, this is just so doggone cool. So I didn't want to weaken the great end to say that, but I'm really excited about this. Great stuff. So now you can continue on.
Well, that's great to hear, Commissioner Hutchings. Yeah, I think, I think we're seeing a structure of how to put some of the, this work together. Um, and I think that's be, uh, to a degree borne out by the fact that progress is, is being made. This is the, the second of three to four primary examples, uh, we're bringing up. The, um, Southwest Washington Grain Project. A couple of years ago, uh, the, there was a discussion among farmers that grain storage was needed. That actually occurred in Rochester and, um, was facilitated at the time by Marcy Cleaver from the Southtown Community Farmland Trust. There's been this continuing interest in serving the specialty, uh, malting barley industry. And so this work, which is eventuated in this larger facility has grown out of that. But we've not lost sight of those original goals of, of serving local, uh, brewers. And distillers as well as having a backbone to make a viable ag, uh, grain facility. So. Um, the, the, this all started with the motivated group of growers knowing that something was needed. That's been really important. It's been important to other projects as well that we'll talk about specifically in the Food Hub. Couple of years ago as well, the WSU conducted a, a survey of grain growers. We asked if there was unmet storage needs in support getting grain to market. The, uh, figure in the top right indicated, um, just one of the results from that work that we had on that storage needs. This worked, uh, this work was conducted with farmers both in Thurston, Lewis and Grays Harbor County. So getting to that regional approach to ag development, um, the grain industry is regional. It's not necessarily just by county. The site that was most suitable for a large scale grain facility ended up looking like it would be at the Port of Chehalis in, in, in Chehalis, just south of Chehalis. The reason for that, it's located with some of the, the largest expanses of grain. But I also wanted to point out while we're talking grain storage to get grain to market, we have dairies in this county. Um, some that set the, uh, uh, produce milk for Organic Valley. They would like to be bringing grain in to serve their dairy. So a facility like this. Kind of it's a, it's, it's rising water that raises all boats essentially. Um, it, it has benefits on the outbound leg as well as the inbound, if you have a facility. Um, this all eventuated in the development of this rail spur right here. Um, this was built earlier this year in 2020. The survey work that WSU did, uh, freed up distressed county funds from Lewis County in the tune of $800,000. And they put this pad in, this drive in this entire rail spur extension. This is going to be a future transload facility, but there's a, in the short term, a, a piece of equipment that can load grain onto rails. And 400 metric tons of grain or of malting barley were grown, uh, this year. There's another 850, I want to say, tons on contract for 2021. Going down to Great Western Malting. This gets to the infrastructure topic, but also gets to a large scale market side of the equation that we've talked about. So this has been, uh, to me to see happen this year, nothing short of miraculous. Um, and we're continuing to work on the build out. So here's the, here's the direct benefit to growers this year, 2020. Hundred and twelve thousand dollars in sales and a hundred thousand of that was direct payments to farmers. So that was money right into the pockets of, of growers who are producing malting barley. Um, the facility to really build it out and have the kind of storage that is needed there, which would look somewhat advanced is about 1.4 million. So some funding from, uh, through a rural business development grant that was awarded to NABC, who was the project lead on this project at this point in time. Um, was to design this facility and these are the segmented small scale storage that would allow people to sell, say to. Local breweries and put, you know, one of these full of organic malting grain grown locally, and that would go out to local brewers. And then there's larger scale storage. Yeah, go ahead.
The, uh, the spur line that you showed, the rail line, is that a spur line to the BNSF app of BNS?
Yeah, they serve both, both BNSF and, um. What's the other? Western Pacific? But then both, both rail services.
Southern Pacific?
Southern, uh, no.
No.
It's.
And was that, was that built in conjunction with or, um, uh, did BNSF help fund that or did we pay, you pay for it all?
No, that was paid with these distressed county funds that Lewis County allocated. Again, I, yeah. So, but the facility can serve dairies all over. It can serve farmers all over. It's, but we got that support through a regional approach.
Okay.
Yeah. And if, and if I could just jump in real quick, just a couple of things, we focused a lot of craft brewing, distilling and, you know, grains for malting. Uh, that has been, you know, fits really nicely with our IPZ. But, you know, as the, um, Cascadia Grains Conference has focused on, there is also, um. Multi, you know, uh, grains for bakeries and, and, and grains for animal feed and, and many other, uh, markets that we can develop out. Uh, for these local grains. So growing the local grains and having an initial market has been, uh, a powerful piece of that. Uh, if you could just go back really quickly, Stephen, to.
Yeah.
Like that. Uh, I just wanted to hit on that. Also just while these motivated farmers were the ones who initiated this project, in the process. Uh, NABC later effort to form them into a growers cooperative. And that growers cooperative, uh, is a really powerful thing to have now that we have for the region because they, they chose. Specifically not to call themselves the Grain Growers Cooperative. And what that has allowed is that as we started to form the Food Hub, which you're going to hear about shortly. Uh, we were able, instead of starting a whole new growers cooperative, our Food Hub growers just joined the growers cooperative. As a separate division of the cooperative. And that can continue to grow as we find new markets, uh, and new initiatives. We continue to add to this growers cooperative that we now have that really centralizes in Thurston and Lewis. So.
Yeah, that's a great addition. Thank you for pointing that out. You mentioned the IPZ zone.
And yes, and I think most everyone is, we have been designated, uh, and, and since, uh, you know, certainly Josh was involved in this work, uh, from the early days. Um, and, and it has, we, we are really well positioned and we have a lot of signature developments going on. I was actually just out at, uh, Talking Cedar yesterday. And it, you know, we do have an amazing concentration of craft brewers, distillers and ciders here. We do have these districts and areas that we're building out at, that can be tourist destinations. Um, and we, there's stories that we can tell. And I, I think some of you were aware that last year. Uh, a whole group of us, including Commissioner Hutchings, uh, learned how to, to market Thurston County together in place branding. Uh, and it was really, uh, Stephen's story of his, his grain trials, uh, leading with, up to, uh, the Tumwater. Uh, Brew Fest and a sensory evaluation that we told these stories from multiple angles. The port told the story, the EDC told the story, the county told the story, um, all from our different angles and then linked those stories through Thurston Talk. And, and it's, and it's marketing efforts like that that can help us attract, uh, top talents in tourism and investment. And new businesses to Thurston County by just telling the world what a cool place we are. So.
And this work, this work continues. So Aslan just casually mentioned, um, Talking Cedar, but we're actively looking for ways to get them all. It's the barley that's grown here malted and brought back and it's, it's tricky to get that. You know, having a sales market is, is great. That's, you know, it's more important than anything, but being able to complete the circle would be nice. Um, so they're, they're a potential buyer as is Heritage, um, as is Westland. So we have some, some recruitment work to do. Uh, so the next topic here is the Southwest Washington Food Hub. This was a planning proposal for this year initially, this, as I mentioned, grew out of Lucas's work with Sarah. Focused on trying to get institutional buyers on board to support farming in the county and the region. Uh, the, a local food promotion program grant is what it was called that we first, uh, received in 2019. Um, Thurston EDC was the lead on that, uh, NABC and WSU contributed, uh, our, our work plans to the proposal and the language. And it was a planning grant initially, and then COVID happened. And it became clear that planning was felt, felt hollow at that point. Um, and so I, I think one comment sometimes is never, never lose the op, you know. What is, how does this phrase? Don't let a good crisis pass you by or take it, make sure you take advantage of a crisis. And so I think we, we stepped into that mode. Um, and the farmers started talking about, how can we put this on the ground? We don't know what's happening with our, with our current markets, with farmers markets, restaurants obviously went through the floor. And many farmers markets, 14 in Washington State, didn't even open in 2020, um, due to the restrictions associated with COVID. So, um, a very, uh, timely kind of windfall opportunity presented itself through Aslan's work with Pac Mountain Workforce Development Council. Um, so I'm going to let, I'm going to let you jump in in the middle of this story, Aslan.
And, and I know that we need to, to move forward here. We're, we're using up our time pretty quickly. So I won't go into this too in depth, but. Um, yes, Pac Mountain was exploring agriculture that, uh, is, is, many of you know about the cluster study that, uh, you know. Both agriculture and food production are top industries in all five counties of the pack, five counties. Um, and so they were looking into agriculture. They heard about my work, uh, which led them learning about the WSU and NABC work. And they were able right at the beginning of COVID to, to channel care spending through the Department of Labor. Uh, actually Stephen's got the five thou, $50,000 level there because that's the amount that went directly to farmer payments. So they actually channeled $700,000 into our, our regional food systems work. Uh, and really the Food Hub was the center of all of that. And so, so out of that, they helped us actually, we, we were, you know, as our first customer. They wanted to serve all five counties of the pack mountain, uh, five. They wanted to reach to the most remote areas like out in the Long Beach, which we thought was like, you know. If we didn't have some subsidies, we could never make that cash flow function. But we, they actually provided, uh, drivers and warehouse workers and they paid for these positions. Um, and we developed out routes. They helped us find, uh, these a hundred out of work families that were our first customers. And we start providing them food security boxes on a weekly basis. Uh, Stephen's going to talk a little bit more about the training that goes along with that. Uh, it's been a beautiful program and it really helped the Food Hub get off the ground with a, like a guaranteed first, uh, buyer. Uh, it also, as I mentioned, led to positions like David's and Jesse's to manage the Food Hub. So an extraordinary opportunity and partnership. Oh, and would we be remiss if we did not point out that the Port of Olympia stepped forward and, and gave us an in kind donation. Of a warehouse in Tumwater to be our central aggregation hub.
And so these, these pictures are at that hub. This is Jesse Honaker, the general manager who was hired to, to run the Food Hub mid summer. Um, this is Christie. She was hired as a displaced worker, uh, became a driver and a warehouse worker. This is Patrick. Christie's from Lewis County. Patrick is from Pacific County, lives in Long Beach. Um, and it's been neat to kind of pull this team together from across multiple counties and get people working. This is loading up the vans. Um, on a delivery day, this is happening, you know, essentially right now down in Tumwater. And here's the sales and payments so far, um, as of a few days ago, 47,000 in sales and 32,000 in indirect payments to farmers. The rest in administration running the operation essentially. So a pretty small margin, about 20, 23%.
Just to put a quick point on that, you're paying, you're keeping farmers farming and you're feeding out of work people in the five county community.
Yeah, that's right. It, it, it's been, um, it's been so great to be a part of it. Um, and so it's. It's a, it's a really neat, um, model for farmers because it doesn't cut into the limited markets they have. It created an entirely new market. Um, serving these families. And so we're trying to continue that. And Washington State Department of Ag just contributed some additional funding. So another one of those lines on the partnership chart to continue to buy those boxes. Cause the last mile, I, I don't think about the last mile, the last five miles of food assistance is getting it to families. And so this infrastructure that, that delivers to drop points that are accessible is, is key. This is the food security project that Aslan just described and had funding from Pac Mountain. This was one of our first flyers. And certainly this upending of employment and food system is what we were responding to in loss of restaurant sales, farmers market sales. Um, and then providing this food related training to dislocated workers has been the focus of the program. So there's an element of this, it's a training component, and that's actually displaced workers learning about opportunities to get involved in the food service industry. So the food itself is more of a training supply, although obviously it's high quality food. It's the best you can get and people are effusive about it. But the training piece was a huge part of it. And so, um, you've, uh, at one time or another. Learned about, heard about or met Melissa Davis, our SNAP Ed educator in Thurston County. She teamed up with SNAP Ed and about eight chefs and one farmer at Madcap, um, uh, media to provoke, to, uh, develop. A, a video series of cooking with the seasons, how to cook seasonally and how to get, you know, they get their, um. A lot of people recipients receives food, uh, safety handling permits. But this is a series of videos that I should send a link for, and they were just incredible, um, to watch. And they went out every week, a new video of, over the 10 week program. Um, to support people learning how to eat healthy, eat on a budget, eat seasonally, um, and use storage crops. So a big part of this, and these were all filmed at the Grub Kitchen in West Olympia, um, and all local chefs.
And if you, we, Pac Mountain has been, done a fantastic job at gathering testimonials. And it is just so heartwarming. It, it melts your heart to hear these folks, a lot of them very food insecure. You know, people talking about, it's been months since I've seen fresh vegetables. And if you see these fresh vegetables. That what's coming out of our, our farms, a lot of them in the Independence Valley in Southern Thurston. Uh, it's just some of the most beautiful produce on earth. And so like, if that was Josh who talked about, we're not only helping farmers, but we're feeding people. Uh, food insecure people, we're not just providing those, you know, traditional blocks of government cheese or canned goods. They're getting some of the most beautiful freshest produce available on earth.
And so we just wanted to put up a picture. This is the drop site, um, out in Aberdeen at the Coastal Community Action Network. We partnered with, uh, social services and across this five county area for the distribution sites. A picture in the bottom left of a, of a box, actually in, in the Aberdeen area. We'll move on from this.
And again, just be, before we leave the Food Hub, we focused on the food security program, but know that we now have a, by multiple farm, uh. Box that goes to paying, you know, any customer, if any of you were interested in having a box of produce coming to your, to your house. Uh, that's something we're doing. We're also, we have our first institutional customer with Providence, St. Peters and Centralia Hospitals. Uh, and a lot of the work that David is now starting to do is outreach to further institutions that, that Stephen and I have, you know, paved. Pioneered the way over the years, but that the focus really is, we're continuing on if we continue to find funding to do the food security boxes. But we are looking for all kinds of markets, uh, from restaurants to hospitals to school districts. Um, and, and expanding upward into new markets up into Seattle. Um and and expanding upward into new markets, up into Seattle or even potentially down into uh Vancouver and Portland area. So so the Food Hub continues to grow.
Yeah. And Aslan touched on both that mid-large scale markets as well as the high value markets, selling to hospitals as well, selling these these multi-farm boxes direct to consumers that have a higher margin. But the first sale of a thousand dollars to Providence St. Pete's like was like a a watershed moment this summer where we brought on for the first time an institutional buyer, getting food into a food service partner. Um and we're really hoping to do more of that. There's there's challenges to it, but we're seeking these, what we call value-driven uh buyers. They they can afford to spend slightly more money to support a local uh local food system. Uh and so we'll be working actively on that and are working actively. David Pharaoh's working on the on a marketing campaign, an outreach campaign associated with that. Like it's to one of the comments on the first page.
Like correctional facilities?
We certainly, they are on the short list. Um Strafford, I can't remember if it has an R or not, or Stafford Correctional Facility has been quite interested in the past in partnering. Um and so they they have, they have been one of the institutions that has expressed the uh um an ability to flex their their pricing schedule somewhat. Because of course, we we can't reach quite the same economies that um food from elsewhere can.
Yeah.
This gets to be a lot of fun, and this is to your credit, uh commissioners and staff and and Josh and Jenica. The CARES Act Act funding that was directed to agriculture this year, um that was awarded um at seven hundred thousand dollars that you uh allocated for this. I can't say enough how directing funding specifically to ag businesses made the difference. Up until midsummer, there was funding available for businesses that ag ag businesses were eligible for statewide. And the completions rates on those was like ten to fifteen percent from what I heard at that time. Of of the of the people we reached out to, we got probably eighty percent response and completion on this program. Um that's due in large part to David Pharaoh, who will recognize with the photo here in a moment, but this is the stats from that program. Sixty-seven operations awarded, seven-two operations applied, total six hundred and sixty thousand dollars infused into the ag economy in Thurston County to help them get through this time. This was probably one of the most fun things, even though I didn't have to do a lot besides kind of give input on designing the program and then reviewing. That has happened in five years. Um all the other stuff is exciting. This was really cool just because it was still in media. Uh big thanks to David Pharaoh. He's on the call. He did a lot of the the nitty gritty work, um track and paperwork for the program. And he just sent me a couple of these quotes, which are the highly scientific um data points on people's enthusiasm for the support. Uh I don't know what squeam means, but it sounds good. I can't believe it. This is incredible. This grant will make the difference this year and keep us afloat. Um so that's that's been, that's been amazing. Aslan, do you have any comment on that?
I do, real quick. Stephen kind of glossed over it a little bit here, but the pathway that was set up between Stephen and Jenica and EDC and the CARES funding, that partnership uh was huge and immense. And that led to the ability to implement so quickly. So huge shout out to Stephen and Aslan and Jenica on that program.
Yes, thank you, Jenica. You're on top of mind for to to comment on in this slide. Um just that connection, and again, that's the team kind of performing together. So good work, everybody on this.
And a and a thank you to the commission as well. I mean, we, we came to the table late. Most of the CARES Act funding had already been designated. It it was like we were we were behind the curve. They were saying, wait, what about farms? You know, what about agriculture? Um and you all were willing to pivot and work with us in a very intense couple of weeks uh to be able to to channel some of this funding to our to our farmers and our agricultural support, so.
And I'd also just like to say that Robin Campbell had some pivotal input in designing this and recognizing a way to strengthen this program and get it directly out to growers. We had a couple drafts around this, um and I really, seeing it unfold have have recognized the wisdom in Robin's input.
Very nice.
Yeah, so thank you, Robin. I know you're on. So just wanna, I've been wanting to mention that. So this is great. This was a really fun one. We're right at the at the last bit. I would be remiss if I didn't show you a ambition that we have just right before our final slide. Processing is something that Aslan's been doing great work getting in place in the at the ag business park. We have more work to do. If we could connect our local food to schools, we have partners at WSDA, Olympia High School and in ours, K through twelve schools in the area. They would love food in the right form, and that's kind of the key, kind of a minimally processed food. Uh in the sixties and seventies, seventies, maybe even eighties, peas and corn were grown widely in Thurston and Lewis Counties. And there was processing facilities to get those to buyers. Those have all gone away. Last year, the last one, two years ago, the last one disappeared, stopped taking contracts. That was National Frozen Foods. Both specialty products like jams, jellies, that's an opportunity to produce here. And then also large-scale processing products to get them into schools. We could do green beans again and and create a mid-tier processing capacity in this county. So this has been a big priority of mine. It's still out there, a little elusive. We're working on it. I want you to know that other counties are starting to look at this and wanting to kind of fill this gap, and we are still ahead of them. Um and it's not like it's competition. I I speak effusively about collaboration across county lines. Um and I mean that, but by the but at the same time, it's nice to get things that we work on here and to put a lot of energy into and see them land. And we're and we're getting close on that one. And I'm as, I'll say to anybody that there's room for these in in more than just one county. We can do this and 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 connect partners um in many different microregions, including neighbors north and south. So it's not exclusive, but I just want us to get, I want us to get there. All right.
Hey.
How's your summary? Any comments?
Well, yeah, I just guess uh add just what uh Stephen said about the peas and uh was peas and corn, peas and carrots?
Peas and corn, um actually.
Okay. When I left Orange County, California in eighty-five, it was named Orange County because it was just chock full of orange groves. And it was down to just a handful when I left in eighty-five, and I think it's all concrete now. And from what I hear, they lament not having orange groves down there. And so it's the same thing. What you're doing is preventing that regret from happening here, not only in Thurston, but in the southwest region and uh and helping families and farmers.
Yeah. I've visited these facilities around the country. They are possible to build and create. Um and I would just love to put that as an economic development priority that we continue to work on as a team going forward. So I wanna, I wanted to bring it up. This is, that picture there is from Indiana. It's Community Harvest. Big boy restaurant chain funded that whole facility uh for that facility in 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 Fort Wayne, Indiana.
Wow.
It was really cool to see.
So let me go to Gary Edwards. Commissioner Edwards, you have any questions or comments? We only have just a couple of minutes left, like two.
Yes. Yeah. Am I, am I live?
Yep, you're live.
Hey, uh I'm just wondering, from the grain and the brewery end of activities, is there any coordination going on in South Puget Sound College now, being they're getting into this act?
Go ahead, answer.
There is, there is coordination there. Uh Frank is a great partner. He's the director of that craft brewing program. Where we've actively looked for ways to connect our farmers and the the IPZ is is advancing that as well as the grain facility. We haven't figured out quite how to return barley we grow here back as malt, but there's a lot of interest in doing so. And that's part of some of Aslan's outreach work with with the tribes and other brewers and distillers.
Okay.
Commissioner.
That's a good presentation. Real interesting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hey, hey, Stephen, is there any chance I could get a a number to call you at? Uh I do have some other issues on grain I wanna go over with you.
I'll help with the connection, Stephen.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Ty, Ty, you got any questions or comments? We have a minute.
Uh, yeah, I, well, just, I I wanted to have this presentation because I had heard, uh had a meeting with Aslan and heard about the Food Hub. I mean, I honestly, that whole thing got lifted up and I I didn't even know about it. And I know, but I but I did know that this was something that had been worked on for a period of years. Um and was something that we are seizing on the opportunity of COVID. Uh and I just wanted, I wanted the board to hear what had gotten done and what kind of, and what the and what the possibilities were. And I, um, you know, I think Aslan kind of hit on it in terms of explaining, my question was gonna be what, you know, how do we make sure that we don't lose this momentum and sort of dou- let's double down on this? And let's let's use this as a springboard to get to where we we always want it to be. Um and I'm so I'm glad to hear about the new staffing and David's position and looking at a marketing plan and reaching out. Sounds like you guys are doing all the things that I would, I love, that I wanted to hear done, but I guess I just wanna make sure that, you know, the board, uh I think the board supports this fully and any help that we can uh provide to get this thing from, I don't, I don't want it to wither away and just be kind of this nice little story during the crazy twenty twenty, but let's use it and to build the, you know, to build the infrastructure toward, it just seems like we got this massive push. Um and I'd love to use that momentum, and I think the board has agreed on that. Seems like agriculture is one thing we all really support strongly, so let us know how we can help you guys get where you go.
Thank you. I don't, I don't think this will die anytime soon with the county manager on it, the assistant county manager, the EDC, uh CPED to include uh Jenica. I think this is just gonna go all kinds of places uh with Stephen Bramwell as well. We've gotta cut it off. Uh time has ended, but boy, we could have gone on at least another thirty minutes on this. It, I find it fascinating. So please keep that momentum going. Uh so this was the regional agriculture development update, and it was a worthwhile hour.
One, one final comment, Commissioner Flaney?
Yep.
Um and I'd just like to give uh kudos to Stephen and uh Aslan. And reflecting back two years ago almost, when we were just uh wordsmithing uh the the MOU, to come to this point and see this presentation, I know that it was a lot of activities going on prior to the the MOU being signed. And moving forward to see the in the next two years, the consolidated approach that you have taken is just remarkable. Uh kudos to you. Continue the mission. And as Commissioner, the Commission stated, agriculture is part of the, what Thurston County believes in, is part of our our makeup as a county. And we'll be there to support as much as we can.
Thank you. And Aslan, I think I owe you, I owe you, Aslan, a brain shot, I believe.
There you go. Back at the market. Thank you so much, and thank you, Commissioner Mezner, and and thank you, Romero. That wonderful to hear that, that that voice of of support. And and me and Stephen were just saying, as we were preparing for this, like, hey, we haven't really done this with the county commission. And maybe this should be a yearly or every six months that we come in and give you an update and stay in touch. So so I do hope you invite us back.
You will be. Thank you all so much. We have to adjourn the meeting now.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye.